We have an meeting to order. Then we'll have a roll call. We have everybody here, both the two of us.
I think that should be a little late.
Okay. Then we have any additions to the agenda?
No additions.
Oh, that's nice. So, we have adopted the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve? A motion by Keller.
Second.
And second by Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. District 741 is proud of J&amp;M Auto Service and Towing for helping make the mock car crash an extremely successful event.
I do have to apologize to them. We just missed them on our list.
Okay, now we are at public comment. So if you have anybody that wants to speak for a public comment, don't rush. Forward. Okay, then we will move on. Proven correct minutes from the May 19, 2015 regular board meeting. I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
A second by Keller. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Okay, we are on the first item of business. On our business items, for those that are here, the public has the ability to comment. So we will say something when the time comes. So number one, review and consider approval of the revised 2014-15 revenue and expenditure budgets. And I've had them in our packet.
I have them in the packet. We had that over at the last meeting. So unless there's some additional questions to it, I would just recommend that we approve the changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the expenditure, revenue and expenditure budgets.
A second.
As presented. A second by Cheryl. Any further discussion?
Board should just be aware of that. We still may have some bills due, but we may not spend every penny that we have in that budget. If anything isn't spent, it will change us a little bit, but it will increase, not decrease.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Okay, number two, review proposed 2015-2016 revenue and expenditure budgets.
This is built the same way that the last year's budget that you just approved is built. This is for the 15-16 school year. If you just take a look, you have 14-15 revised revenue, then you have the 15-16 proposed revenue. Then you have 14-15 revised expenditure budget. So the review and the revise should be the same as when you just approved. And then just goes through. So you have the general fund. Shows you the amount. It is down a little bit. Top is down, enrollment is going to be down a little bit. Food service, you can take a look at that also. So we go, proposed revenue is 9108. And the proposed for 15-16 revenue, the expenditures is going to be $8,920,984. And it's the same way, move across the food service. I don't think I need to read every one of these for you. Community Ed, capital, goes through that. Building construction is a new column that we put on there just because we have the $230,000. And right now, at the end of June, we plan to have spent about $230,000 of that. So we just carried over the remainder of that and that will continue to be spent down as we get projects done. Debt service. We're levy for that, so changes that remain the same. Trust fund remains the same for what they're spending out of that. They just keep the trust fund in the real spender, the interest on that. Then you have your totals. Then when you get down a little bit further, it says positive or deficit budget by fund. You'll see that for the general fund. All of them are positive except for the capital, which is forty-seven thousand, but that's because health and safety is also in there. We get a little further down, I'll explain that we're actually going to go up a little bit in our capital and our reserve fund. So we are positive in all of them except for the capital. The building construction, again, that will disappear completely at the end of five years because again, we plan to do a roofing project at the end of the five years. Debt service, again, is going down a little bit just because, again, we kept too much in there. That money is given back to the community. So if you take a look at the estimated fund balances at the very bottom. Our general fund for the 14-15 year, we're projecting will have $426,000 in there, which is moving in the right direction. And the one that we're looking at for 15-16, we're looking at 613. Our food service will go up slightly. Our community Ed, again, will go up just a little bit. Capital levy Fund Five will go up slightly. And then it's broken down to operating capital only because Zero Five has capital, health and safety, and also the technology levy is in there. Then we made two more columns. One is for just capital alone, and you'll notice that our reserve fund for capital goes from 93 up to about 100,000. And the tech levy will be zeroed out because, again, right now our intent is to spend the tech levy because we bought computers for this next year. In the future, there will be a fund balance for that because we're going to be starting to save for our next rotation, which is a big rotation for students, and we'll need to save a certain amount of our tech levy every year so that we can pay for that for cash versus taking out a loan or work. Then again, the debt service and then the trust fund. Oh, yeah. Mark, I can see your question.
Well, shouldn't there be something no in the tech levy?
We weren't quite sure how to put that. It will be $230,000 in the tech levy. Certainly, we could change that and put that in that column.
I think we should.
But remember, we don't gain it in 14-15, so we would put it into the fund balance for 15-16.
Right.
We could certainly do that. That's not a problem at all. Like I said, this is the first reading of this, so we have to come back to the board at the next meeting anyway. So we can certainly make that adjustment. That's not a problem.
Yeah, I would say.
And we will get the money in the.
We will get the money in 15-16.
And that's what this is for, right?
Yes, that's correct.
I would like to see that in there.
We will make that change. The only piece that we weren't quite sure of is, because again, we'll use it all up, but we'll figure a way to show that.
Well, you would see that in the expenditures when we go through. Every so often, you will get that on our list and you'll see what our balances and what our expenditures are in part of that fund, right?
Yep. No, that's not a problem, so we can certainly add that to the budget.
Other questions?
Other questions for the budget? You know, it just needs to be aware, like all of our budgets. We're dependent upon student enrollment. We're dependent upon special ed. We have no idea how that's going to shake off because we've changed everything this year. The legislature still hasn't made a final determination, so this budget is based on what we believe they're going to do. I can only say who knows. So it's my best guess at this point. Hopefully, the legislature will have their special session, make their final changes, and then we can change as we need to for the next board meeting when it will be approved.
Okay.
The startup for the 15-16, the $9.1 million, is that just what we're expecting of revenues for this year? Or is that with our carryovers of what's in our.
I think that's just the revenues that we're bringing in.
Just revenues.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, this is just a reading of this.
This is the first reading, so please do take a look at it if other questions come up. Give me a call, send me an email, or bring them up at the next meeting. And at the next meeting, I will bring them back to the board for final approval.
And comments from the public? Okay. Next would be review and consider approval of the annual ABE Consortium agreement with Glacial Lakes Consortium for 2015-16.
Madam, if you might just give a little bit of.
Sure, yep. That's how we're funded for Adult Basic Ed, the GED program. Need to be part of a consortium. The monies go to the consortium, and then out to the consortium members.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Okay. We did a public comment in there, so I didn't miss anybody. Since we're grateful today. Okay, now we're on personnel. Review and consider approval of resolution placing Amy Doobie on unrequested leave of absence by a .201 FTE due to lack of pupils and financial limitations.
If the board remembers, we did bring this up for a previous meeting. Gave time for another meeting if the staff member so chose. No requests was made. So this is the final piece that we need to do in order to make this reduction. Again, I'll mention to the board that our intent is, there's a grant that we're hoping to get. We're very sure that we're going to get the grant. Right now, our intent is probably to use the same staff member to fill that grant, in which case the FTE will go up. So we'll probably see me come back to the board once we make sure that we get the grant and this FTE. I could be asking for the FTE back, but until we get the grant, I just don't want to take any chances and miss any timelines.
Okay, this is a resolution.
It is.
So if there are no further discussion, do I have a motion to approve this resolution? A motion by Lou?
Right there.
A second by Mark. Any further discussion? Okay, Linda?
Keller? Aye. Mark?
Aye.
Randy?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Ruth?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Okay, passed. Okay, number two, review and consider approval of John Blunningdon as an integration program para-professional July 7, 2015 through August 6, 2015.
If the board remembers, we approved our integration plan and the theater camp, she's a parent for that. So then again, this already comes from the integration budget.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So will.
A motion by Cheryl.
Second.
Second by Keller. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Okay, review and consider approval of the following staff for the Haynesville area summer morning targeted services program. Shaleen Strand, Jennifer Wurst, Kim Jones, Wanda Hesse, and Sue Tysher.
The addendum gives you all the hours and stuff, so unless the board wants to go into that, we won't cover all that. This is really paid for out of our targeted services, so we do get reimbursed for these costs.
I have a motion from Keller to approve.
Second.
A second from Randy. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Okay. Number four, review and consider approval of Kim Jones as ESY teacher for a total of 14 hours. So that's ESY.
Early, I don't know, standard school year.
Okay.
Yep.
So that's what that meant.
And I know you guys keep telling me to flip those things.
You were just listening to Cecilia and missed that one, didn't you?
This was not that it went so far.
I think that's wrong.
There's enough of them that it's.
And this is for one of our special needs students, so we're really going to approve this one.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve. Okay. I have a second from Lou. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Review and consider approval to terminate Adra Laura's para-professional para-position effective May 29, 2015.
This particular para-position is paid for through a grant, very much like the same situation that Ms. Baby's piece is on. My problem is, is that we believe we're going to get the grant, but we don't know absolutely for sure. So again, just to let people know and be aware of what we need to do, it has nothing to do with performance at all. If we get the grant, I'll be coming back to the board with the same person most likely and to fill that same position. But again, because of timelines and all that, we should let people know that that's happening. We probably won't find out about these grants until probably September. That's part of the problem, so without doing it now, then we're kind of stuck. So I believe, I wish we would find out about the grant earlier and then that would avoid all of this.
Okay, we're looking for a motion to approve. I have a motion from Lou.
Second.
I have a second from Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Review and consider approval of terminating Jacqueline Gruber and Sue Tysher's original POS program assistant assignments effective May 29, 2015.
Yeah, if you take a look, it does explain it a little bit in the addendum. What really happened is that we hired these people to run the POS program, not thinking we hired them into June. But really, the new contract that we have with the morars that the board had approved, we didn't realize until after that board meeting that now we had kind of double booked them. Our original contract went into June. We started the same people on a new contract for the year in June after we'd already hired them, if that makes sense. So we need to terminate one of those contracts. So it's, we thought about what to do with this. We could have left it. Nobody would have known. But for transparency, if anybody ever goes back to the board meetings and they do look at that, we thought it would just be much cleaner to do the termination for that so that there's no doubt that we weren't paying somebody for two assignments. So we do apologize to the board for that. If we had caught it earlier, we would have corrected it then and there, but we'd rather be transparent than not.
I have a motion from Cheryl. I'll make the second. A second from Ruth. Any, excuse me. Okay. Any further discussion?
I got one, just one question.
Sure.
So with that being said, that you have two contracts on the same month, legally, what can you do?
Yeah, at this point, what I'm going to do right now is what I believe is the fair thing to do, which nobody was expecting to double pay for any of these things. They were doing exactly the same job. So it wasn't like we were contracting for two separate jobs at the same time, which case I would guess the fair thing would be to pay for both jobs. In this case, they were doing the exact same job, and our intent is just to leave as is, just correct it. Leave it from there.
But legally?
Um, I didn't call my attorney, and just because of the cost of even asking that question. If somebody brings it up and makes it an issue, then I will call our attorney and we will go from there. I believe we will be fine. But the staff members knew exactly what was going on. So I'll apologize all they want because we certainly didn't want that to happen, but we did miss it.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Number seven, in personnel. Review and consider approval to hire Bradley Walters for the open maintenance position effective June 10, 2015.
They're still in an open position.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So will.
A motion by Lou. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Randy. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Number eight. Okay, I'd like to, we should talk about this. Could we have some reports before we go to that? Or do technically, we need to have that and come back? Because then.
I think just for the people who are here watching this, I would suggest that we move that to the very end. Do the reports adjourn to go into full session. And then the only thing that's left then is to adjourn at the end again. So it would certainly save anybody time here that's sitting here watching this thing so they don't have to wait. So I would recommend just for efficiency that we do the reports first. I know that they're going to be shorter on Mr. Orion after I talked about the commitment, now the commitment that he needed to go to. So that Max is trying workshops.
Workshops, okay.
So we're going to put them all on the agenda at the next meeting, too.
Okay. That, everybody agrees?
Yep.
Okay, we're good? Okay. Okay, so then, number, we'll go to informational reports, number two. Secondary principal report, Laura Flora.
Well, maybe it's good that it is a manual reporting from our administrative side because maybe I'll go. I plan to just kind of go over some of the changes in the book, although our student handbook, it's a single sheet and in the book, so that the board will have the opportunity to take a look at them, take a vote, and call me during the next couple of weeks. And so if you have questions, if you have a chance to look at it, then you can give me a call on any of the changes.
Sorry, we're going back to the board then at the next meeting.
It will come back, yeah, this is. Is it on? Okay. Yes, it will come back to the board our next meeting in June. Okay? So nothing major. There is a couple one, and actually, the one that affects the students the most is the very first one.
Laura, you double check that. It was on, see if it's still. Check the on switch.
It's on. Testing, testing.
Just talk loud.
Okay, I'll just talk loud. All right, I'll use my coaching voice. Is the very first one. When college in the school started, we would take a semester college class and teach it for the whole year. All right, so with that, you have a college class that normally they'll run about three credits, and we would give students four credits because they would get one for each quarter they are in school because they also get, you know, the high school time, et cetera, for that class. Well, now we are taking the three-credit college course, and because of changes with Nisku, we are having to teach it in one semester, just like the college. So what's changing is our students, actually, if we keep the system the same, is getting shorthanded because they would get, if a student goes off campus and goes to St. Cloud and takes that same class, the macroeconomics, they get three credits. And when they transfer that back into our building, that one, that semester, they would get three credits. If they take the macroeconomics class here for that same semester, even though, you know, it's being taught, they would only get two credits. Okay, so I don't think that we want students feeling like they're not getting the same amount of high school, and this is high school credit. It has nothing to do with the college credit, but this is a high school credit. So if they are going off campus and we transfer the credits back to our campus for high school credit, we would like it, I think it would be only fair that we offer the same amount of credit if the students are taking the courses here because we're offering the college courses here for student convenience and to be able to offer our students what they want to take here on Haynesville campus. So with that, if you go to page three, and if you look at the very last sentence is what addresses it, is college courses offered will give students the same amount of credit as they would taking the courses at their college institution. So they would just get the same amount of credit, and it's just how it's evolved. You know, instead of offering it over here, we're starting to offer them over this semester. So just kind of changing.
Seems totally logical.
Okay?
Question.
Okay, thank you. Then if you go to the next one, and Cassandra, just so that you know, did catch, in the twenties, the pages get off by one page. We did fix that in the fight, but we didn't want to go run all the copies again. So if you go to the bullying, as we have seen with the state, we are wanting to add more complete policies, and as policies change and kind of ebb and flow, you can add need, update them. What we thought would be most effective for our book, if the board is okay with this, is we want to keep everything alphabetized, you know, and every time you make big changes, you end up reformatting, which is time-consuming also, but we still want the policies there. So looking, if you look at that last line, I thought this would allow us to do this continually if we want to add other policies, is starting an appendix. And so you have a short description of bullying, and then have that is listed as appendix one at this point, and then that appendix is at the end of this book or document. So that way then, if in the future things come up and we want to add the complete policy, you know, it would be easier to manage the book itself and still give that information to our students and to the parents. So we did that with both the bullying and the harassment. And then we'll just keep that appendix at the end, if that seems okay?
It is a logical, because if we were to change the policy, it would be very logical.
Yeah. It just seemed logical.
Good idea. We have it in the handbook that they can read it in complete detail if they want.
Right, and it's handy, and, you know, and we revamped the whole handbook, I think it was a year ago, and did it in alphabetical order. I do think it's much more user-friendly. All right, so if you go to the discipline, and it's towards the end of that, so around page twenty. I went past it. It's under the discipline and the types of discipline that you can have. Okay, it's on page fourteen. Technology is growing and its scope is growing, although electronical devices kind of incorporated that. I thought it was relevant, especially with some different things that have happened over the last couple of years, and the cyberbullying policy that came out is that we actually add, number thirty-nine, you can see highlighted, misuse, harassment, or bullying with technology devices. That we actually label it and just kind of bring that up. We didn't have that before, so that's just an addition that we just label it. Sometimes I'll have students say, well, it's not there, you know. It just says electronic device. This isn't, this isn't iPad or whatnot, so just clarified it, okay?
You know, when we were at a Minnesota School Board Association meeting, I attended it, I think some others may have attended it, but now it was at one of the round tables. So anybody that's. There was a school presented there that actually laid a real nice comprehensive DLO because it's a fair amount more involved identifying the harassment and everything. They had it all done, and it was working very nicely for them. I'll try to dig up my information and I will get you that because I saved everything, so.
Yeah.
I'm going to run, but I should get you that. It would take this, and it just kind of like, you might go to an appendix on that
That's.
and be able to incorporate something on it, but it was a very interesting thing. And they talked about how difficult it was to put together. They spent a year or a year and a half or something trying to get this all put together, and they had lots of staff and students trying to figure it out.
Yeah, it's a very complicated. So if you could find that for yourself, it'd be great. Okay, then the next one is the lunch account. Okay, oh, and before we get to that, the harassment is just talking about the appendix again. Okay, lunch accounts. And lunch account payment procedures and the lunch money part. All that was changed with that. It's just terminology. If you look at number four, a lunch account must be zero or above to be able to eat. If it's not, then. If it's not, an alternative nutritional meal is provided if a count has a negative balance. That we actually have that kind of in there. Is that okay? And then on the lunch money part of it, it just, all I did was add that we can now have payment online. They can pay in the cafeteria or use the website and pay, and that is in that first paragraph. Okay? I think that, oh, and then if you'll notice at the very end, since our civil rights review, one of the things that we need to put in, and we were gonna put it at the very end as an appendix three, is, um, our, the single sheet that we have to include with all our documents, naming our, our section five oh four coordinator and our title nine coordinator, and talking about that we practice non-discrimination rules and regulations, et cetera. And that's what this piece is, and that will be going in here. And we just kind of got that put together after we had run these copies, so.
And I think Laurie, I think there's one other place on that OCR report that you have to change the attendance piece just slightly.
Oh, I, I will have to add the discrimination clause kind of similar to this actually in the policy. The one question I had about that is, what we have in the book right now is our board-approved policy, so that policy will have to be modified. If it is okay with the board, I'll use some wording to put in here because I do have to send this book in.
There's some wording that we'll need to add. There'll be a number of policies coming across because of the OCR piece, so we have to add some things. Some of the, there's a slight change that we will have to make the change.
It won't do anything.
You guys are gonna make a change so you can get this approved or sent in?
Right, I do need to have this in right after our meeting in two weeks.
It's not such a change that it will make much difference as far as the policy itself.
Yeah, it wouldn't change.
Yes, my understanding is a little bit of wording that we have to make sure that we don't discriminate against anyone that has a disability of some type so that they can't attend something, but there's a reason for that, that there's some flexibility on the part of principals to make an exception to a rule.
So it's just pretty much non-discrimination rage that has to be altered to fit the program?
That's correct. And we do have to make a change regardless, so.
Right. And where it would come into play, and we've practiced this already, is we have a maximum attendance piece of our policy that assume can only miss, cannot miss more than twelve days of a class and receive credit unless there is a medical appeal. Instead of just, hey, having a medical appeal, it needs to also involve the non-discrimination if there is different types of appointments, et cetera.
What we'll do is give the principals some flexibility to be able to meet the needs of our students.
Okay.
Therefore, would it be wise to be moving that discipline, which is the change gonna be to an appendix instead of having a commando?
What I'd like to do, just because we are keeping the timeline, and Cassandra and I came up with this after she had done that formatting, is look at probably doing that, but possibly doing that next year.
So are we formatting like schools around us? Or are we referencing?
We're, we're similar, I mean, I'd say we're... You know, I'd say we're similar to some and different to others. I think we are more data information heavy compared to some others.
And I think the format...
But I don't think that's bad.
The format, I think you grab any schools and they do things differently. There's no guidelines, although the Minnesota School Board does have or be, they do have what they consider to be their model handbook. So we have to be to get a hold of that.
If we're better than that, I'm fine. We're the best here at things on the line.
I believe that we're meeting all the needs of the information that needs to be in there. There's no set guidelines on what we have to have in a handbook.
And I do think the authorizing of the book and I think the appendix piece, I think all of those are some major improvements that we've done and make it more user-friendly over the last couple of years.
So is this one of those that comes with like colored paper on it?
It's actually the Minis, the, the bank, the... Credit Union. Credit Union, um, donates all our planners to our students, and this is on the inside of the planner. So every student gets a copy of this, which is a huge investment that the bank is, the credit union is making for their student, and students, and I'm very grateful for their contribution. We've done that for a long time, since John's era is when it started, so.
Is this your electronic album already?
This is electronic, yes. So, okay. All right, so yeah, if, as you page through and you have questions on other things, definitely call me, and we have some time to do some editing and those types of things as well. Okay? Other things that have come up, we obviously finished school. One fun fact is our eighth grade graduation. We had the most parents come. Usually it's more just kind of a student-teacher celebration, but we packed the middle school media center this year. It was good fun. We had several parents show up, then it was a nice little ceremony farewell to our eighth graders as they leave for the summer and then will come back as ninth graders. We will, we had a wonderful graduation ceremony, and I thank the board again this year for being part of that. I heard some wonderful comments from parents really appreciating all the work our staff and our school board have done for their students over the last, you know, many years they've been with our district. So we sent them off, and I would like to commend both Cassandra and Jack, even though we have been one short in our high school office, our secondary office, we were able to get grades and final transcripts, all of those things done this year, actually a week earlier than we have in past years. So it has ran pretty smoothly. We did a few things different that allowed us to do some of those, so it worked really well. And I think, if you have any questions?
Thank you very much. And we are on our media education report. Matt is coming down to make the next.
Good evening. We had every field about one full tonight per game, so I don't know if you guys heard the siren was going off, so.
It was.
Yeah, so just see what happened up there. I don't know, I hope so. Hopefully, we had a game on the stadium, so.
Good.
Summer's been pretty crazy so far, especially with our summer camp pause program. We have over fifty-five kids enrolled, and that is, each week is themed, just like if you're to go to Bible camp or any other camp where it's a big deal each week, and that's eleven and a half hours a day of programming per day for all summer long. So you'll be seeing next board meeting, I met with Bob, some updated assignments for staff time, so my... So it's, but it's great. It's a really good, good problem to have. We, this has exceeded our expectations by quite a bit, so it's a good thing. But we have some excellent staff in there. We've already been to Hemker Zoo last week. We're at the Haynesville Historical Museum today. We're going to the, so each week's a field trip, and so it's, it's, it's been going really well. Our summer overall numbers are very strong. We're trying a couple of new leagues for baseball this year, and we're really enjoying that stadium, and I'm pretty sure they're really enjoying it tonight, especially the fans covered, and there's been a lot of upgrades to our fields too of just having so many more dugouts on our fields. So things like tonight, that helps with the heat, that helps. So each, each year we're trying to pick away more, more projects there. Reminder that our summer five-week concert series starts next Thursday night at Van's Beach. We also have a Master Mark Plastics Tour next Tuesday night, if you want to see giant Play-Doh machines that actually push out the stuff to make the decking. It's pretty neat. We have two of them there for quite a few years, but we try to highlight all the major industries in town, and that one is upcoming next week. So we do have a few spots open if you want.
When does that happen?
It's on the sixteenth at seven o'clock. So just send me an email or call me if you want to be added to the list. Other than that, any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. My activity is director of Max and Cuzee. So then we are on teacher negotiations. We've had two meetings. It's going excellent so far, I'd say.
So far.
We're just throwing things on the table, so I don't even know what everybody's doing, but so far, very good. Administrative report.
I have just a few things on...
Even though you see it from the side, folks at home, is Robert Hewitt, I'll make him look at the camera so you don't be as...
Nobody needs that. Just a few things. Again, we're waiting for the legislature to have a special session so they can finish up the job they should have done a few weeks ago. So we're just waiting. We do believe that they will have made an agreement for education. I'm hoping nothing changes from where they're at. I know that I haven't been on Monday where Town Melcher comes in, so he'll be able to give us all the ins and outs of everything that's happened for education. So I'm looking forward to that. Does look like at least last I heard it that they will make, although it's really late, they will allow us to start before Labor Day. That's the way it looks right now. The trouble is, is that before they make that decision, before we have next board meeting, now we're on June twenty-third. I just don't know how we can change it, even if we wanted to at that particular point. I hate not to. It would certainly be nice to start school a little early, give our students a couple, a few more days before the state test, but it's so late here, I just don't know how we, we know that well. But I'm gonna bring it up at the next meeting if they allow it. We'll have the discussion and we'll make a final decision and go from there. Looking at adding some time to the food service. Remember I told the board that I would bring head food service person in from Recore and Alvey? I think as a consultant piece, we'd like to bring her in for a few days to help us continue to look at ways that we can improve and get better in the food service piece. So I'll come back to the board at a time with a proposal on what we'd like to add and the cost of all that. So just be aware it's coming. I agree with Laurie that I thought the graduation went extremely well. I got a number of compliments from community members and thank yous. Want to just talk a little bit about this. We're looking at doing some fencing around the stadium. Part of that, we had discussed, is putting that fence up that was taken down. But there are some, also some other fencing projects that we want to go, we want to go further down than what the fence was. We want to put a gate up at that one road that really is the road. So there's a number of fencing things that we want. The total cost when we did a bid on that was about ten thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. Okay? Much cheaper to do it in one shot versus bring somebody back in later. We did save some money on our bids for our carpet in, in the room that, the work that we did in our science room. We saved almost thirteen thousand dollars for that. I don't know if the board wants me to come back. Every time something like this happens, we have that, but I'm really going to recommend that we do the fencing. If it wouldn't be done this year, I'd be going on the five-year plan to get it all done the following year. This allows us to get all the gates up that we want, the fencing, to finish it off the way that we want. I have to meet with my administrative team, so some direction on the part of the board. Unless you want to be more involved in that particular piece, I'll inform the board. I'll do just what I'm saying now, but it'll be more just an informational piece versus a permission type of piece, if that's all right. Okay? We did discuss QCOM at negotiations meeting today. QCOM is a way of bringing some additional dollars into the district for staff development, those types of things. There's going to be some, there's a waiting list right now for QCOM dollars. That means the state has used all the dollars that they have. The new budget, we believe, is going to bring some additional dollars in, which will pay for everybody that's kind of on the waiting list to get those dollars. We talked with the teachers today. We'd like to look at doing a QCOM plant. Our intent is to fill out a form that needs to be signed by myself and the board. My suggestion is just let me sign the letter of intent that tells the department, Minnesota Department of Debt, that we're going to look at developing a plant. We believe that would be good for both the district and the teachers. It would allow us to do a lot more things than we're doing right now with additional dollars that we would get. I believe the state will continue to move down the road of adding more dollars to QCOM. If we don't have a plan in place, then we can't, don't have a chance with those dollars. So just be aware of that. So if you hear, certainly direct any questions that there are towards me. We're continuing to do our projects, muffins moving forward, carpeting. If you haven't had a chance, stop by the media center and the elementary school. That'll give you an idea of what the changes are gonna look like. We're starting to get, Buellaw is gonna do the project for our vending stuff, so we're gonna be starting that. So a number of things are just starting to move now, and we'll get them done. I wasn't even gonna bring this one up. Transportation keep getting closer, but... Hopefully by the end of June, that's all I can say. There's still things that we're trying to work out. We had some discussion late. We kind of have drawn the line where we're at with this, so we're hoping that we'll shake itself out here.
I will inform the committee.
I will inform the committee once I get a little bit more input back from the transportation company itself. We're kind of waiting for that. They know where we're at with this, so we're kind of waiting to shake the small pieces off. There's a couple areas of disagreement that we feel strongly about, and that's kind of where, why it's just taking more time than we would like. Just a moment, we start with nine forty-eight. We do lose six, or abuse students for nine forty-one and end of year, so. And OCR, just be aware, there are a number of changes that we have been asked to make to our policies, and they all kind of add either agreements, procedures, or non-discrimination statements, those types of things to the policy. So all of those need to be done and in place by the start of the school year, so you'll start to see the policy committee meeting again and have more discussion of all those things, make the changes that we need to make. That's what I have.
Okay. Anything else from the board? Okay, at this point, we will move to close session under Minnesota's statute thirteen D. point zero five, subdivision three A, to review the superintendent's evaluation. Afterwards, we will return to adjournments.
Yep, only thing that we'll do when we come back is make more adjournments. We'll kind of re, reframe those off meetings order, and then we'll adjourn the meeting.
And the statement we make about your recognition?
Will come typically next, next meeting.
Okay?